Hello and thank you so very much for joining me tonight. Um, this is a different uh long form for me because I'm finally in the space that I'm gonna be creating these for you. So I just wanted to walk you around the room, give you the Patreon tour. Because for long forms, I really want you to feel comfortable. I'm so sorry. I'm filming on my phone right now because my camera setup is a separate microphone and camera. And my iPhone actually has better sound capture and video capture at the same time. Verse um, trying to set up something quick for a little rig that I could, you know, give this introduction to you. And so I'm so sorry for the quality. We're gonna move over to like the proper um equipment. After the intro, I just wanted to be able to like walk you around and stuff. So it's a little, it's not messy. I came in and it was absolutely beautiful, but I do have a little bit of my things around, but. Because the long forms are so important for me to really, or you know, what I find important is to create like a really comfortable space for you to just whether you're falling asleep, whether you're um just zoning out, whether you have it on in the background and you're just, however you choose to work with a long form, it's important for me to first set up the fact that it's a safe space and a comfortable space that I'm creating it in. And also for you to sort of have the experience and even though of course you're in your own home or wherever you might be. So I wanted to, you know, walk you around the space a little bit. Um, here's the entrance door to the room. And it is dark in here. There are no overhead, oh, I guess there are overhead lights, but I'm not gonna turn them on. I don't even, should we? Should we? Hold on, let's see. Ah, okay, this works. I'm gonna flip you around. Can I flip? I guess I can't flip. So we'll have to have my big shiny head in your face right now. So this is just a little intro to the room. The space, these are my lights. This is a ceremony room, so it's full of like really yummy energy. We're actually gonna be doing the long form session on the floor on this like super plush rug here that I'm so excited about. Um, I haven't decided if I wanna bring a massage table in. They're quite heavy to look around and I do have a lot of equipment with me. Because I basically have five hours in here a week. So I have to bring a lot of stuff and um upbringing massage table would be like a whole other thing. So if I can, if you're okay with it, like I'm loving this. I am loving this. Alright, so I'm gonna stop for a sec so I can turn you around. Okay, hello again. So we have some water, my bag on the floor. Some ceremony tools. This is me. I left this open. I was looking for matches because I forgot some. Let me just remove this drawer here. There we go. You can see ganache on the wall, some plants and stuff, cozy chair there. Some more plants, some beautiful decorations and crystals. I believe this is Quan Yin, if I'm not mistaken. And the person I share the room with is a tea master. I don't know if that's their proper name, but this is all of their tea stuff, so I don't wanna mess with that. We have this gorgeous fireplace. And more, again, I'm pretty sure Quan Yin. Ooh, look at the selenite. I hope you can hear me. Over here, some more little books and things and some crystals. I'm not gonna be using any of their things. I wanna be very respectful. Um, hi. Over here, the moon tarot card. How perfect, the subconscious. This gorgeous kind of chaise. This is just my stuff on here, but this chaise lounge here, which I'm sure we'll be able to use. And I'm gonna turn off the lights again, just to give you the vibe. So how vibey? You know, the other times that I came to look at the space, this air conditioning unit wasn't running so loudly. So I'm assuming it is gonna turn on and off. And you know, I'm in Florida. There's gonna be air conditioning. But um, you know, I've kind of myself basically been um suffering and turning off my air conditioning because uh it's like the only thing I can control. Whereas the traffic I cannot control. So um, I figured, you know, I'll just be sweaty and deal with the hot. But this is a space that other people work here, chiropractors and different um other Reiki practitioners and stuff. So I wanted to, you know, I can't turn off the air for everybody else. That would be, that would be quite cruel. So just giving you a little, there's some records and books. I'm sorry you can't really see. Some beautiful crystals. Gorgeous singing bowls. I might ask them if I might be able to use the singing bowls and not bring everything in myself, but. So um yeah, this is it. Um, the roof is gorgeous. There are some overhead lights. There's a beautiful like dream catcher sort of thing. Cushy bell hanging. How perfect. So I'm sure you can see why I was so excited to get into this space. Um, it's absolutely perfect um minus the air conditioner, but like I will deal. We will deal with a little simple drone-y background. We'll figure it out. Um, please just be, you always are. You always are. I don't need to ask you, but just cuz I don't want anyone to be surprised. I don't know what's gonna happen. I don't know if that was gonna turn off and be loud. I'm gonna edit out anything that I think is intrusive or alarming. Um, I'll do my very best, of course. Um, but I just, you know, want you to get familiar and be okay with the fact that that might turn on and off. You know, that droney sound might turn on and off. And you know, like different stuff like that. I'm still getting used to it here. This is literally the first time I've been in here, like on schedule to film in here. So as you can imagine, like I'm feeling a bit awkward. I am. But um again, I'm just so grateful to you because I could never afford to rent this space. Um, on a monthly basis, especially um without your support. And this is really going to change a lot of the look with my channel. I think that some people might be uncomfortable with that at first because change is just weird. But I still will make the occasional video of my house, of course. And you know, it's just like going through these phases. Like if you've been with me for a long time, like I know many, many of you have. You've seen me in my house in Staten Island. You've seen me in Jersey. You've seen me um like at my dad's house is what I mean. You've seen me at Boyfriends that I had at the time in Friends' house. You've seen me in the park. You've seen me um, you know, when I had my office in New York. You've seen uh now like the transition in Florida. And now you're seeing another space. So it's just a chapter, you know, I'm not buying the building or anything. And I hope that, you know, this gorgeous ambiance and like this, if you could feel the vibes here, like it's so nice. It's so safe and protected and yummy. It's in, this room is in like the center of the whole building. So while we do have to deal with the air conditioner, there's not gonna be trucks and breaks and all this stuff that really distracts me. I know you are very, you know, gracious about it all, but it's distracting for me too, right? So anyway, sorry. I'm like right up in your face. I'm so happy. Look, we have a fireplace, guys. I'm so happy. I'm thrilled. I hope you enjoy. And um we're gonna get into our long form now. And again, oh my gosh, thank you. This is technically the August long form. So thank you so much for your patience. Also, just one more thing. I'm so sorry, but this is going to be a different long form. I mean, obviously the space. But this is literally the first video I'm filming in this space. And um, I had to bring like, there's two lights here. I have three more out in the hallway. I have a big tripod for my camera. I have another tripod for my mic. Um, I had to bring a pillow. I had to bring outfit changes. I had to bring so much stuff with me and um so I didn't get to bring like my singing bowls. I didn't get to bring a drum. I didn't bring tuning fork. Like I forgot my rat also. Um, this is gonna be kind of like, you'll see as we go, but I just want you to be prepared, right? It's always nice, I think, to have some sort of understanding. It's gonna be a lot of simplicity in this one. Little spray, little oil, little selenite wand. And things just kinda drown out, drawn, drawn out, excuse me, into just like longer experiences during this session. So I hope that that serves you. I hope that's okay. You know, again, I'm kind of baby giraffe wobbly legs over here, so I hope that you're okay with that. And as I get more comfortable here and as I'm able to store things here too, cuz I'm not there yet where I'm storing things here. Um, I'll be able to, of course, incorporate more of my goodies into the sessions that we have together. So I am so excited. I'll just say, you know, bye to you and I will connect with you shortly as I just set you up and prepare you on this beautiful space in front of the fire. Like how freaking lovely. Or maybe I'll put your hand over here so you can gaze at the fire. I think that'd be so nice, but again, just thank you so, so, so much. I appreciate you and I love you and I hope that you enjoy what we're about to get into, you know, so. Alright, well, we made it. We're here. So as you can see from the little room tour that I tried to provide for you, we're actually laying on this super plush rug on the floor in front of a fireplace. I'll play with the space as we go, of course, as I get a little more used to my surroundings. But I thought this was so cozy. Like I would love to curl up here. And I don't know, just love it. So just a few things. And I know I sort of addressed them already, but I just really wanna make sure that you're comfortable. Like I said, there are other practitioners renting spaces here. So it's possible to hear a door open and close. It's possible to, you know, hear someone chatting a little bit in the background cuz there's a reception area. Um, like I said, I will edit out anything that I find to be very intrusive, but when you're editing a two hour-ish video, it is easy to miss some stuff. So I would just rather you also um, you know, be aware of the fact that if you hear any voices or anything like that, I'm not in a haunted house. There's just other people here, which is great. I feel safer knowing that there are other people present in the building, of course. So um, yeah. Welcome and thank you. I hope you enjoy. We're gonna really drag out the simplicity of this session. And I mean that in the best way, or hopefully the best way. So again, you have your head resting on a plush pillow. Actually, one that I brought from home today. That I really like to rest my microphone on. Your body laying on this plush, comfortable, supportive floor and uh rug. Some pillows over here to look at, right? Just adding to the plushness. Your feet may down here near the fireplace. So we have again, your head. Your face. Your ears. Your shoulders. Your arms, chest, legs and feet. Right, and we're gonna set our intention. I hope you don't mind me kind of sitting and hovering around you as we go today. I realize it is darker in here than I prepared for. And I'm sorry for that. I hope it doesn't bother you too much. Oops, so sorry. I'm on a different tripod today. So enjoy the baby giraffe legs, right? Actually have a candle from the Cancer season batch. Canceri season. And we're gonna light our candle. I wanted to bring that homie, homie intention, as in home and comfort. And kind of christen the space here in Virgo season. So on behalf of the highest and greatest good and perfect comfort and alignment, our intention today, just be very careful, is to support you in whatever you may need. Whether that's vitality, whether that's activations, whether that's manifestations, whatever is right for you at this time. Whatever is right for you at this time. There we go. I'd love for you to just have a look at this candle, at this flame, at this light. See it as the light within you. See it as your fire burning bright, the light of your soul, the light of your conscience, consciousness, the warmth of your body, your spark, your inspiration, your motivation, your um like consciousness as in right and wrong, your morals, your compass, your guiding lights. Just connect with it for a moment. Breathe in yourself. Breathe in and connect to your heart. Breathe in and connect to your soul. Breathe in and connect to your desires, your love. Breathe in and connect to your passions, your senses. Breathe in and connect with your gratitude, your appreciation. Breathe in. Connect with your forgiveness, such as with the air conditioning going on right now. I hope it's okay. I guess I'm gonna find out later when I'm editing things. Breathe in and just connect with you, with your subconscious, your subliminal minds, your past, your present, your future, your friends, your family, your blood, your soul family. And just connect in this moment. Feel your presence in this very moment. And your presence through all dimensions and realities and experiences. Connect with your youth, connect with your wisdom, connect with your maturity. Connect with it all. You, the light, the warmth, the glow, the inspiration. Connect now and just set your intention. Perhaps you have an area in your life you'd like to direct this energy work to. Or you can simply direct it to wherever it is most benefited or wherever it would be most benefited. Wherever area it would benefit most. That could be in subtle realms. That could be in physical realms, emotional realms. I think I said material realms, but as in like manifestations. Just hold that. I'm just gonna place my hand near the heart. Just hold that. Let your eyes close if they feel heavy. And just gaze into the light if you feel called. See if your eyes are closed. See the light behind your eyelids. Or the flame illuminated in your third eye, your inner vision. Or sense the warmth of it on your face. And just send in your wish, declare your will, declare your intention to receive on behalf of your highest and greatest good and imperfect comfort and alignment, whatever is right for you. The removal of blockages. The ever, ever like just perfection of flow and harmony and temperance. And whatever is right for you. Right? And I'm honored to provide this session, to facilitate this session. And it's my intention to serve as a perfect conduit for you today. Not that I am perfect, but to serve as a perfect conduit. To deliver to you, even through a video, whatever you might need, whatever you might most be benefited by. Right? Just give you a little more time to look at the lights, to declare your will, to receive. And I'm just gonna set this down somewhere safe. Alright, switching sides on you over here. We're gonna now do, perform a body scan. Okay? This is just for you to tune into your body. Send a little love as I channel through as well. And just get into a nice, relaxed state within your body. Now, forgive me. I just wanna tilt your head down a little bit more so you can see the length of the body here. I'm so sorry for that. There we go. Okay? That might look a little nicer for you, I hope. And I'm sitting on a little cushion to your side here. We're gonna start over the head. Focusing on your scalp. Focusing on your hair. Massaging the scalp. And near the hairline. Going back, dipping down to the base of the hairline on your neck. Around your ears. Focus on your shoulders. And just let all stress and tensions slip away. Again, now move it to the face. Relax your brow. Let go of the tension in your forehead. Just when you think you're fully released and relaxed, your brow, relax it even more. Go deeper. Let that stress go. Feel your cheeks, your jaw. Just relax them. Let your jaw hang a little loose. And just when you feel like you have fully relaxed your jaw, relax it more. Go deeper, go deeper. Let your jaw really, really relax and relieve any tension from the jaw. The jaw muscles. I'm not gonna focus on going into your mouth, but just outside your lips here. And for you to focus on relaxing your tongue. Just feel very relaxed. And when you feel like you have relaxed fully, go even deeper. Go even more. Loud any tension. Soothe it out gently. And release it to process. Back to the back of the neck, massaging here. And relaxing, releasing all the pressure in your muscles in the back of your neck, all the tension where your shoulders and neck meet. And just when you feel like you have fully relaxed, go even deeper. Even more loose, even more calm. Let it go. I'm gonna focus on this side, this shoulder. Kind of relax and channeling through as we go here. Bring in the soothing, comforting energy into the shoulder. Coming down on the muscle, the bicep. The elbow. Forearm and fingers. Just feel the entire side, your entire right arm. Relax, loose, wobbly. And just when you think you've fully relaxed it, go even further. Really let go. Really let go here. Just gonna press over here and get to our left shoulder and arm. Okay. Focusing on your shoulder here. Relaxing as I channel through into the shoulder. Down the bicep, soothing, relaxing. Releasing all tension here through the elbow, through the forearm and hand and fingers. And just when you think your shoulder and arm could not be anymore heavy and loose and relaxed, go even further. Relax it even more. Of course, as we're focused here, this is energetically speaking, but if you do not wish to even visualize me or anyone for that matter touching parts of the body as I focusing on the shoulders, that's perfectly okay, right? So we wanna respect everyone's boundaries. Alright, but I'm gonna focus now near the clavicle. The front of the shoulders. Channeling through and just focusing to relax. Relax these muscles, relax this bone. The clavicle bone here. Soothing. And just when you feel like you could not relax anymore, go ahead and do it. Go deeper, more relaxed. Right? And now just gently hover over the chest. Channeling through and guiding you to relax your chest muscles. Soothe it away, let it go, let it float, let it disintegrate, let it turn into dust and wash away whatever feels good to you. But just relieve. And just when you thought you cannot relax more, do it. Relax your chest even more. We're gonna focus on the upper abdominal area. Soothing, channeling into the space, into the muscles, into the digestive system. Take a deep breath. And when you're ready, relax those muscles, relax your organs. Just let it all flow. And again, when you feel like you have relaxed fully, go even more. Let go again. Down to the lower abdominal area. Your lower guts, excuse me. Your sacral area, your space of creativity. Channeling through. Relaxing, relaxing your hips. Your pelvic area, just ease and flow. Let your stomach bubble, let your body do its thing, but just relax. Let go. And let go even more, even more. We're gonna focus down the back now. Feel the muscles in your back, the muscles around your spine. So you channel through here, becoming so stress-free, so letting go of tension. Relax your back all the way down, from behind your shoulders, all the way down your spine. And your, the sides of your body here. And just relax it more and more and more and more, go deeper, go deeper. Right? Focus on the right leg now, the hip, the thigh. Just channeling through, all the way down to the knee, calf, ankle, foot. Just feel this leg, relax. Shake it out. And when you feel like you have let go as much as you can, let go even more. Your foot should be heavy and floppy, your legs should feel like they're turning into honey. Right, so we're gonna cross over here to your other side here, to your left side. And here, we're gonna connect with the left thigh, left hip and thigh. Knee, calf, shin and foot. Channeling through here. Letting go of all tension, letting go of all everything we've been hanging on to, this is the last space. And we're just letting go, feeling our leg relax deeply, 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 deeply relax. And again, just when you think you could not relax more, focus into one more time. One more plunge, one more depth reach, total relaxation. Right, just kinda just sweep down the body here. Casting out any stress, any tension. Any blockage. And any thoughts, any feeling. You know, I don't mean to deny you your thoughts or feelings, forgive me, that's not what I mean. But just anything that's gonna chatter, anything that's not really helping right now or needing to be addressed, just put it in the back for a bit, let it go. There we go. Just so jelly, comfy, then relaxed here. Right? We have a salinite wand here. And we're gonna just be combing through the aura very thoroughly. So I'm gonna begin over your ground, creating a whirlpool. A spinning portal above your ground. Allowing that flow to come into the work field from spirits. And if you do the same below your feet, focusing way past your knees. We have this nexus doorway open, calling in energy into your auric field from spirits and from matter. Just creating this beautiful meeting place. Gorgeous energy. And I'm gonna be working through, just combing, combing through your aura. From your head, all the way down your feet. And I have my eyes closed and focusing deep. Through the entire form, from the outermost membrane to the other side, crossing through. Just clearing this gorgeous salinite wand here. Releasing negativity, releasing whatever thoughts or feelings we may have populated our auric field with. That may be disempowering. And any supportive stuff is welcome to stay. Just combing. Slipping down. Right? Right? Just gonna focus a little deeper now into the subconscious. Just glinting, almost as if we're accessing the aura of the subconscious. And we're just doing some gentle glancing here. Whatever your higher self deems worthy of release, just clearing or moving or shifting or illuminating whatever is right for you. Just channeling through empowerment with time. Accessible wisdom, wisdom you can utilize. The expansion of your joy, your subconscious joy. The expansion of your subconscious abundance. The expansion of your subconscious intellect in terms of what you can access. The expansion of your subconscious love. Health, vitality. Comfort. Right? And that feels good to me. I'm just gonna kinda lean across you here, maybe back. So we're just gonna use the wand still to focus through the meridians, the ankle. Just touch your back a little bit here. Through your meridians, your ankle, your knee, through your thigh and hip. Through your fingers, wrist, elbow, shoulders. Through your heart, your plexus, your mind. Down. Shoulder, elbow, wrist and fingertips. Hip, thigh, knee, shin, ankle, foot. Just focusing through like a beam of light, through a lightning. Just focusing through like a beam of light, through a lightning. Commanding these meridians to open, to flow. To clear all blockages. And just let things move as we move over to our head to toe portion of our session here. Flow in. In. In and out. 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 In. Receiving. All that would serve you. All that your soul would benefit from in this experience. And releasing your creations. Your communication. Your attention, any outward release. In through the breath. And out. Okay? Just to let those portals open. Flowing through to you. Spirits. Mid-term and primordial energies. Alright, excellent. Okay. So, just gonna start by channeling through to the crown. With the intention of you receiving whatever you need. Whatever would serve and support you. Connection to spirits, connection to the all. The reminder perhaps that we are all one, we are all connected. That your life, your steps, your goals. What you create, what you experience is meaningful. It's meaningful to you, it's meaningful to others. Who have come before you, who will come after you, who share this space with you. I'm literally seeing a crown, like the image of a crown. Just scooch over. So I can see your beautiful face here. I hope you don't mind the angle, but I just wanna place my hands in front of the third eye here. I realize you can't see. But just allow me to channel again whatever you need. Whatever would serve you most. To your point of your subtle senses, to your point of being able to shift your consciousness. To meditate. To take yourself to other vibrations and frequencies. By tuning into your hermit space, your own inner world. Where you can create anything, it's limitless. It sounds so small, right? Oh, your inner world. It is vast, it is expansive. There is everything here. And you can access the space to tune in and shift your perspective. Shift your reality. To jump, you know, to jump into another state of being. To access tranquility, to access manifestations, whatever, whatever is right for you. To imagine, to play. Just channeling through. I'm just gonna place one hand in front, never mind. At the back of your head here, right behind. I'm seeing symbolism, almost like the higher fit. Like traditions. Ceremony. Sacred. Um, adornments. Just channeling through. Right, so I'm just gonna cross over to the other side of you. Just so I can position my hands in the opposite way, so again, just sliding my hand to the base of your skull. I'm placing my other hand now, just to create a cross current. Just to support balance and tranquility and again, whatever you need. I'm seeing white rabbits. I'm getting images of some YouTubers that I follow, perhaps some of you are creating channels or something like that, or just putting yourself out there. Visioning how you would do it. How you would, you know. What it would be and all this stuff, and that could be for any creative project truly. Just wanna empower. Any sparks, any dreams, any goals you have. See their success, see their ease, see how naturally it came forth. Alright. Sorry, forgive me, don't wanna be in your view. Focusing now on the throat area. Channeling through here. When you're focusing on your consciousness, your logic, your thought, your expression, your communication, your interpretation. Your dissection. I'm getting images like designs or graphic arts. Almost looks like a book cover for a children's book or something in my mind. Like, um, Matilda or something like that. Again, just gonna scooch. My hand under your neck and place the other. At the front, not pushing, not pushing at all, so gentle, barely touching, not even touching for some of you. I hear like singing, like belting. Let it out, let out that roar, let out that song, sing it in the car. I'm getting this like reminder of one of my favorite things about Bjork. And that she goes to Iceland to the woods just to scream in nature, just to let it out. It's so healing to let it out, to use our vocal cords and express. Even if that's yelling underwater, yelling into a pillow, or singing. Or poetry, or anything at all, writing. Punctuation. I'm seeing an ax. I don't know if you heard me, I said I'm seeing an axalot. Alright, and again, I'm just gonna cross over you and shift hand positions. Again, just scooch my hand below your neck or to the back of your neck. Channeling through, barely touching, just hovering. Connecting the higher heart to the throat, to the consciousness. Gonna shift focus now to the heart space. Just channeling through. Whatever you need. I'm seeing plants right away, like like plant people, like plant mom, plant daddy, like that kind of thing. Specifically tropical plants, big foliage like monstera. Variegated varieties. And getting a message to share. When you care for a plant, when you care for yourself, when you care for the earth. When you care for your body, when you care for the earth. When you care for that which is living, you're caring for the um, more, um, broader consciousness of that which is living, you know? So you can intend to do self-care for yourself, or hold a boundary, or whatever that might be. And intend for it to be correspondence of taking care of the earth, this wow. Just channeling through, I'm seeing the sign of Pisces. I'm seeing like eternal, um, what are they called? Like eternal, um, bouquets, not like not like those flowers, those roses you see of like eternal roses, but like, um, dried, different varieties of dried, um, arrangements, you know? That can sit on your altar and never wither. I don't know what those are called exactly. I'm seeing matcha green tea. I'm seeing like a ladder, like getting a ladder and climbing up on the roof for some reason. I'm seeing like the tree of life and the roots and the branches. Birds nesting. Sun rising and setting. Alright, I'm just gonna move my hands to your hands now. Excuse me. Holding hands with you. Sending in. Up your receptive channels into your hearts. Out your dominant channels and out into the atmosphere, out into the world. Out into be transformed or transmuted, whatever is most appropriate. Sending in. Calling out. Sending in. Calling out. Just keeping this flow, keeping this current. If you're awake enough, please fold your hands and if you're able bodied, or just your focus. Fold your hands into your heart space. Rest your hands on your heart now. 往下到 solar plexus. And you can keep your hands on your heart if you like, or you can just rest your arms at your side, whatever's most comfortable for you. Just channeling through here to the solar plexus. I'm seeing bicycles, I'm seeing jumper ropes, seeing tennis shoes and sneakers. Some of you are called to move perhaps. To get a new hobby, to play more. I'm seeing the library and books. Again, just channeling through here, whatever is right for you, whatever you would be best served by. Your point of connection to yourself, to your actions. Right, I'm just going to reach under the body and on top of the body. Just supporting this vortex. This field, this is a great field. I'm getting this image of like gargoyles and griffins, but more specifically like our own little. Forgive me, I'm gonna use the word demons here and I only, I mean that in the most playful, you know? As in like, uh, as if, I don't know, Lilo and Stitch, like that movie, as if he was a demon. You know what I mean? Like playful, playful, playful. I don't mean it in a dark way. But how we have our own little demons that protect us, right? Like your cold shoulder, or your, um, filling up your schedule, so you're too busy to, uh, connect with people. You know what I'm trying to say? Just gonna switch. The frequencies here, switch the currents. Like you have your own little guard dogs, is what I need. Through your actions, through your personality, and that's just something to consider, you know? We all have them. Just wanna call. To let the soul shine through our actions. Such a powerful manifestor, taking a step, taking an action, really changes everything. Alright, shifting down now to the sacred area. Again, whatever you need, whatever would serve you best. Focusing on your creative potential, your creativity. Focusing on your connection with other people, your emotional center. Your relationships, your vulnerability, your emotions in your relationships. Your creativity in your relationships. Your relationship with yourself. Your relationship with others. I'm getting the Ace of Cups image in my head, it's overflowing. Hiding down to the blue area. Forgive me, I just wanna sit on the other side of you now. Thank you. Focusing on the roots, your connections in earth, your body or blood, your history, your future. Your manifestations, your creations, your reality, your experiences. Your resources, you know, whatever resources you might require. And whatever resources you maybe have to offer. Knowledge, time, anything at all. Whatever you need, whatever would serve you best. I'm getting some really trippy images. Most like going through a portal or a wormhole or something. Like a roller coaster. I'm getting images just related to kind of surrender, not defeat, just surrender. Going with the flow, letting things process, letting things happen. Just gonna place my hand between the knees and in the lower abdominal area. Still focusing on the roots. Close, remove, connect, and bridge these chakra points. Alright. So, um, somebody just came into their office and they're a little loud. So I do apologize for any, um, background sounds here. But I don't know how long they're gonna be there, I don't wanna just sit and wait, you know? So we're gonna continue and, you know, this is all learning for me, so thank you so much. But I want to use. Empathic warrior crystals here for you. Hello. So here's what they look like. And empathic warriors means they have, they're a little damaged. Cause the empath is usually the one who has really lived the tough experiences, right? Like they feel it, they feel your pain. So we're gonna be using. These empathic warriors to connect with empathy, empathy, excuse me, yes. But also to release, if there's anything in the system, in the body, that's been taken on, on behalf of someone else. Or that belongs to someone else, and it's not serving you, and it's not helping them either, you know? Often we take on things, but it's actually not doing anybody any good. It's just a, it's just a nature of us to do such, but it's not really benefiting. So we wanna go through, tap and clear out any, um, empathic sort of, um, attachments, you know? Anything that's attached or lingering from a beautiful place of empathy, yes, but also not benefiting anyone. I'm sorry for my tongue tightness here, but I just wanna try to explain. So I'm gonna work first through the ankles or through the knees. Closing my eyes, just visualizing. It's almost like sympathy pain, right? Around the toes. The foots, the heel. The Achilles area, around the ankle. The shin bone. Around, more like. It's almost like releasing karmic ties in a sense, but ones that we've taken on in some, you know, from our emotional resonance. Just releasing. Can picture little sparks flying, these taps. Up the thigh, to the hip, excuse me, I'm so shy, my eyes close. Thigh, to the hip. Right, onto the fingers. The arm. Shoulder. Over the hands. Sometimes we even take on like a dis-ease on behalf of someone else. Thinking we can carry the burden, but we can't. It's not how it works. So we're releasing any of that physical, emotional, mental, spiritual for that matter, karmic. Releasing. To the hip. Down the leg. Knee. Shin. Achilles. To the foots. Around the toes. Excuse me, I'm just gonna come back and work through. The center, focusing now on the organs, on the blood. The lungs, the liver, the heart, the spleen, the thyroid. The intestines, the stomach, pancreas, the bladder. The kidneys. The pelvic area. Getting over your head. Some water clear cords. Okay, so here we have some of our buddies, our bigger, clarchord's points. To show you how pretty they are. Just stunning. Here's the other one. So beautiful. And I'll place one pointed. Um, in, excuse me, our receptive palm point over here. And out, your dominant palm point on the other side. We're just gonna allow those to support this flow in and out, in and out. I'm gonna use this tiny little water clear cords here, like. water clear cords here, like. And again, I'm focusing for you. It's not easy in here. I gotta get the hang of it. We're just gonna send in some supportive. Excuse me, there we go. Just gonna send in some support. Turn up through. Receive miracles, love, whatever is right for you. Your body, your mind, your spirit. This is um, um, plant derived relax spray from Bee and Robes, my friend told this to me from Boulder. There's some spray all over the body. It smells very yummy, very herby floral. Alright, at this point, we're gonna focus on some affirmations. Okay. We're gonna set intentions to access these subliminal mind and send in these supportive affirmations. Okay. Hello. Have you all facing up now, just laying back? And like I said, we're gonna be sending in some affirmations into our subliminal mind space. Okay? I am loved. I am patient. I am generous. I am kind. I am intuitive. I always know what to say. I always trust myself. It's easy for me to trust myself. It's easy for me to fall in love with life. It's easy for me to manifest. I receive all that I need in my desires to create an experience. Even on my darkest days, I am able to find or cultivate the light. I can transform any experience. I can alchemize any experience and extract the gold. Extract the lesson. Find the good. I follow what empowers me. I follow what feels aligned. I follow what resonates. And I know that even though I am guided by these, I still forge my own path. And my path is one of sovereignty, of a healthy independence. And I take ownership of my life and my actions. I have always been there for myself, even when I didn't realize it. It's easy for me to love and forgive myself. I easily make friends with those who will be in a good alignment for friendship with myself. I easily find work that lights up my soul, that feels right. That's exactly what works for me. I love what I do. I love who I am, I love who I've been, I love who I'm becoming. I know that no one is infallible, everyone makes mistakes. But I can accept that as my human experience and move on. See what was right, see what was wrong, and move on with that knowledge. I live in abundance, the world I live in is rich. I allow myself to be a port for these riches, for this abundance. And I direct energy to places and experiences and people and causes and parts of the world for that matter that resonate with me, that I feel called to. I know that I can magnetize anything I desire to me. Whether that's love, or relationships, friendships, career, money, situation, circumstance. All I have to do is turn on my magnets. All I have to do is declare my will. And then I allow and I receive. It is easy for me to focus on the good, it is easy for me to witness, to bear witness to things that might be wrong in the world, yes. And validate and hold space and take action. And at the same time, it's easy for me to tune in each day and focus on all the good, all the beauty, be it in nature or that I see in my fellow mankind. Whether that's in arts and music, kind actions and deeds, the love of a pet, or the love we have for animals, a rainbow, a flash of lightning, stars in the sky, birthdays, anniversaries. There's so much to be grateful for and appreciate. There's so much to love and be appreciative of. I am grateful every moment of the day, it is easy for me to tune into gratitude, it is easy for me to shift my frequency to that of gratitude. And through that, I am in the receiving state. I am receiving all that I might need, that my soul might require in this experience. For its endeavors, for its commitments, for its whim. I am attuned to my spiritual self. I am attuned to my subtle senses and my abilities. I am attuned to my creative energy. And I know and recognize how powerful I am. With humility and humbleness, of course. I know myself. I know what I love, I know what makes me happy, I know what the next step, and the next step, and the next step, and the next step will be. Within me is a compass. Compass of my soul, guiding my path, guiding my steps, leading me through this life journey, this life experience. I sleep so well every night, I easily fall asleep, I easily follow through with my sleep uh, routine. Making my space dark and quiet, perhaps reading, or journaling, or meditating. And it helps me sleep soundly every night. I have no fear or correction. I have no haunting fear, I have no looming fear, I have no lingering fear. I'm safe, I'm protected, I'm cautious, I'm aware. And there's nothing to fear. I don't feel change. I don't fear rejection. I don't fear failure. I take it all, the good and the bad, because I know that's how it is, and that's okay. It's part of the journey. And with that comes experience, comes maturity, comes wisdom, comes perfection, comes refinement, comes my own personal development. And I take it all for my soul. I claim those experiences on behalf of my soul development. Collecting my little badges. My activations. Along the way. And just take some breaths and allow those affirmations to circulate in your subliminal minds. To flow with the wind, like a dandelion seed. To take roots, to germinate, to grow, to grow in your subconscious. Water. Seeds. Nightmares. I'm just gonna take some on my fingers. And we're just gonna do a gentle massage around the face. I really want you to focus on your face. And I don't want to bring any negativity into here, but I just want to be real with you. A lot of days I hate my face. And it takes time for me to sort of just become neutral about it. I don't have to love it every day. Or rather, let me rephrase that. I don't have to jump from being not okay with my face to loving it. I can just be neutral, just my face. It's just who I am, it's just my laughter, my sorrow, my sleepless nights. My freckles, my sun kisses, my butterfly kisses, it's all mine. I'd love for you to focus on your face. And just honor it, honor your timeline. Honor your changes. Honor your experiences. Your scars. Just, it's not even about, oh, I love myself, I love myself, I love my freckles, I love this. It's just about accepting. Validating. Validating, you are worthy. And I'm saying the face because we're in this perfect position for a little face focus. But just like I talked about with the heart, and how loving the heart can be loving the earth, loving yourself can be loving the earth, taking care of yourself can correspond to taking care of the earth. Loving your face, or at least just validating your existence. All this can really kind of correspond to just a lot of self-love, self-acceptance. And that's what we want to try and focus on here. The acceptance of who you are, who you've been, who you are, who you're becoming. Your growth, your healing, your pain, your joys. Your changes. We all go through experiences that forever change us. Let's take honor in that. Your soul is eternal, your light is eternal. This experience is a little treasure, a little just that, an experience. Just rub your shoulders here. Just gonna channel through. Bear witness to yourself, validate yourself, honor yourself. Just gonna spray a little of this mist. And channel through. Just relaxing, nurturing, caring for yourself. Alright, wonderful. Just gonna move you around one more time to ground and finish up our session, alright? Alright, so now, we're gonna set intentions to ground all that we've experienced today into the body, into the experience. Just gonna focus, pulling down. Grounding this head. Just taking this in, grounding this head. Alright, well, I hope you enjoyed your session. The first time in this space, I do apologize for any awkwardness and stuff that I need to figure out, but thank you so much for, ah, for this. Um, I can't thank you enough for allowing me to create this for you, for your patience from last month, and for, you know, just being with me on this journey, thank you so, 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 so much. From the very bottom of my heart, I bow to the divine within you and I, into this beautiful connection that we share. So, so, so very much love to you and namaste.